Good morning, colleagues. I'm Nina Trente. She is here to turn. Guam is back from recess. We are still on second reading. And we will begin this morning with Bill number 94-37-COR. Senator Roy Canata, you are recognized.
Good morning, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 94-37, an act to repeal and reenact Chapter 58D of Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to the Makaha Act of 2013, as amended in the Committee on Infrastructure, Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Service, Self-Determination, Star Preservation, Housing, Public County, and Guam Build-Up. Introduced by myself, Senator Joe Sinagustin, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munier-Barnes, Senator Chris Barnett, Sabina Flores Perez, Amanda L. Shelton, Duane T. Deese Nicholas, William A. Parkinson into the third reading file. And I would like to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 94-37, as amended, is relative to repealing and reenacting the Makaha Act of 2013, found in Chapter 58D of Title V, Guam Code annotated. Madam Speaker, over the years, many students have attended Simon Sanchez High School and received their education in a campus that has fallen into disrepair, hopeful that any one of them, any one of those many promises made to them, that the campus would be rebuilt and would eventually come true. Simon Sanchez High School, which has been serving students since it's been converted to a high school in 1981, is one of Guam's oldest high schools. It has not undergone any significant renovations or upgrades since then, and it remains one of the oldest learning facilities still in Yusong Guam. The Makaha Act of 2013 was enacted a decade ago by this legislative body. The legislation revealed that Simon Sanchez High School is dealing with a combination of issues such as deteriorating conditions, outdated design, and overcrowding. The Makaha Act was created to address the need for rebuilding the new campus, which has been a longstanding concern. A decade later, the school is in the cusp of finally of obtaining a new campus within year, with the completion of the A&E phase. But the school community still expressed to us that there are necessary changes required within the Makaha, which Bill 94 aims to address. Colleagues, the Legislative Committee of Simon Sanchez High School held its initial public hearing on April 26. Numerous stakeholders of the Simon Sanchez High School and the GCOE community came out to voice their support for Bill 94 and offer their comments on what they believe should be included in its final legislation. The committee then held its first of its kind legislative roundtable on May 18 to publicly mark up the bill and finalize the changes sought within Bill 94. From these two public hearings, the committee confirmed that the following changes, which now are before the body. These changes plan to involve DPW more time to prepare and construction solicitation, adding classified personnel to review the committee, including the Simon Sanchez High School school administrator, clarifying the government's responsibility to cover utility costs, and assigning the responsibility of maintaining both the interior and exterior areas of new campus buildings to the selected vendors. I would like to express my gratitude towards the GDOE, GIDA, and DPW for their contributions towards the final piece of this legislation and Department of Land Management. I also want to give a special acknowledgement to the Simon Sanchez High School students that made sure we all followed through on our promise and provide a better education for our children. And I humbly ask my colleagues for their support this morning. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, would anyone like to speak on the bill? Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill. I'm also a co-sponsor. I'm also a former board member that has been trying very hard for over maybe 12, 14, 16 years ago to get Simon Sanchez on track. And then, when I was elected seven years ago to this body, we made several attempts. And throughout the years, there's been many efforts, from the excuse of DOE that they can handle it and then they can't handle it, to now, hopefully, this will put it to rest. When I ran for the Board of Education was because my son was going to Simon Sanchez. I knew of the problems. And we made many efforts on the Board of Education to fix or at least mediate the problems they had. I'm really hoping that my colleagues would support this bill. And hopefully, this will put it to rest and that we can get Simon Sanchez finally built. Because everybody throughout the past eight years has made every excuse why they couldn't build it. They couldn't fix it. To even begin with, three governors ago, when I was in the Board of Education, I asked that they build the school under the 80 acres that was provided by the Department of Defense. And then DOE lost that. Lost 80 acres, anti-south. If folks don't remember that, 80 acres was an anti-south, but was committed to DOE. And the agreement was, build it or you lose it, the property. And that's what happened. We lost it. I'm just hoping that this bill would finally get Simon Sanchez built, groundbreaking done, and let's move on. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Senator Sinaculous, you're recognized on the bill.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you. I rise in support of not only the bill, but my colleague here. He's always been consistently coming and supporting me. And I want to congratulate him and thank him for this bill. Couple, or maybe yesterday, I spoke to an educator. And he mentioned the happiness factor. He says, you know, for some reason, it feels like we let our standards, we lowered our standards somehow and we're not as happy as we once were, you know, here. And he's an educator. And he tells me, you know, the crumbling schools and the conditions at Southern High and how he's making ready to prepare his family to leave the island. And we cannot keep doing that. And with this bill, I think, you know, it shows our commitment to perhaps raising the standards and improving our happiness. Schools are like churches to me, you know, or synagogues. It's a place of not only where you can build souls and build character and maybe a nice place might encourage that. I visited Simon Sanchez several years ago. I went to use the restroom. And I saw that the stalls were disintegrating. I mean, it was just deplorable condition. And it's kind of sad that we let that happen. And we continue to let that happen. And this bill, perhaps, build a new Simon Sanchez, rebuild Simon Sanchez, and show our commitment to the people that we do care about our standards and may perhaps raising them. Because they're literally our future. I didn't want to, as I guess sound too cliché, but this bill does that, you know? It's going to raise our standards and perhaps provide the necessary atmosphere to encourage and build dreams. And I stand here in support of my colleague and the measure. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill. Senator Titigui, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. You know, I know this has been a long road. Everything from bills being passed and bills actually being vetoed and then overwritten, trying to find a solution to rebuild Simon Sanchez. Once upon a time, it was actually to see about repairing it. And the scenario goes that they looked at what happened in the past with JFK, where after the final rebuild of JFK, not rebuild, but repair and refurbish of JFK, it actually cost the same amount if you broke it down and rebuilt it altogether. So I think that's the same scenario that we're looking at here in Simon Sanchez. The amount of money does concern me. And the bill itself, you know, as I looked at the previous bill that was passed in 2000, I think it was 2013, 2014, and how this be is taking this and just striking everything out and then just putting it in again, I'm not quite sure what it's going to change. Because if I'm not mistaken, and if you look in history, you'll find that a lot of the issues was because of procurement. There were back and forth, you know, procurement issues between one particular international company, which holds a leaseback with other, you know, schools. And then, of course, you know, through media, you're finding out that the first news of DPW's first notice of intent to award an RFP that was processed also slowed down the movement because there was another process of, I mean, another protest. So there's a lot of issues still that's surrounding, you know, trying to get this bill through. It's like hit and miss, you know? And if we're going to continue to go down this road for hit and missing, you know, until it's done, then I think we should be a little bit smarter in how we move forward on this. So we have to put in perspective the cost of this. I was at the public hearing on this bill. And we had asked for a blueprint of the proposed building of Simon Sanchez. And, you know, to my surprise, they had things in there like firing ranges. They had really nice, you know, facilities that... It makes me question, what are we trying to build here? I mean, every school on this island should deserve all kinds of nice amenities to the school. A firing range, a lit-up basketball court, and, you know, things like that. But we have to be realistic. And the reality here is that we're still determining whether we're going to get compact impact funds. And those compact impact funds are paying for some of those schools that we had a leaseback opportunity, Adacow, Liguan, Astumbo, Okadu, Tidzen. These are all leasebacks. And we're still not sure if we're going to get that compact impact funding to pay for that. Tell you the truth, I'm just really sick and tired of us putting out false hope to the public. Because the repercussions on that is they get even more upset. And then they lose hope in us to try and find a solution. I don't know exactly what really has changed from the previous law until now. And to address, if this is going to be a tax credit, is, I think in here it says something about 16.975 is going to be the annual debt payment, that they cannot go beyond that? I'm not quite sure. But the author of this legislature, I mean, legislation, it's obvious he's trying to find a solution. But I think that if we are addressing something that's going to allow this elaborate school to be built with all these amenities and later on find out that we can't afford it, that's going to, we're going to be back where we are today. Another hit and miss. I mean, it's almost like, you know, again, here comes the pixie dust and you've got Tinker Bell in your fifth pocket. I really don't know how we're going to move forward on something like this unless we really, really look at the situation and how much we can afford. I do have a question to the author of the legislation. And it's very simple. What is the major difference from the prior bill that has changed to this bill that we are addressing to actually assist in finally getting started to build a Simon, another high school?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Obviously, I thank the previous speaker for her concerns. My goal is to figure out whatever and however to get this school rebuilt. It's certainly been a longstanding issue, generational issue for me. So I'm trying to figure out whatever way possible to get this school rebuilt. The A&E has already completed. The school, community, stakeholders have asked me to make these changes to the bill. So with that being said, we've, we're basically reverting back to a leaseback. The 16.5 annual debt will be, if we want to rebuild this school, we have to find the money. So does that satisfy the previous speaker?
Yes, can we take a five-minute recess? Thank you.